Is that, is that a possibility Ted?
I'm gonna have to look that up.
Or at least we may have them pay half of it, I mean, yeah.
It sounds favorable.
I mean, if they're not, wanna get involved in assisting with it, then we have to do something.
Clear back when I was on the council, this was the hot topic. And we repeat this all around for a long time. Camden Ralph Rohr was one really jumped in and started it out. Camden, they got Camden and Rohr going again on it. We were talking about the county thing and then somehow, I guess. We haven't ever really got it done right.
I don't think there is a way to do it right.
Huh?
I don't think there is a way to do it right on communities or other issues with animal control. It's really just responsibility.
You know what I mean, we're picking up now?
And I, you know, speaking to what you just brought up there Bill, I mean, I can remember the days of, you know, the Elphie had their own animal control, Camden had their own animal control and then eventually involved into, you know, countywide, so. So anyway, but I, I at least wanted to present the, the option, at least providing that idea. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm no, I'm no resident expert when it comes to this, so I don't know what kind of numbers, if you will, that would be asking, at least wanting to put the idea out there that when the time comes for everybody to come to the table, that everybody could chip in financially.
Did you find a place to take our animals, since they still wanna take them out here to Elphie?
To answer your, the initial question, no, we did not, however, I anticipate very soon here to be able to work with Delta Animal Hospital.
Let me say the gentleman in Rossville seems really nice, yeah. I don't know if he's, have you been taking anything down to him yet?
Maybe, it's less than, less than a count of one hand, I mean, maybe two or three of the most that I, that I know of.
Cause he seemed like he was very reasonable and he cares about animals too.
Right.
And then Dart stepped in, cause there are in clean counties, basically, the way I understood it, Eric, if, I mean, maybe they can work together down there with them. I don't wanna take business with Elphie, but if he's more willing to do it. I can't remember the gentleman's name down there.
Henderson, Dr. Henderson. I don't know if he has any space for animals like that. Very restricted down there, nobody's in.
But if he's, in Dart, then Dart can help out. I really don't wanna see every animal you put down. I mean, you have a chance to, to get it adopted, but if it's aggressive and that way, then put it down.
Sometimes I'm aggressive, cause I'm scared.
So he can reach out to him?
Is there anyone else out here this morning that's here for the animal control situation right now? It was quite, over like a hundred, over a hundred people talked about it on the internet this last week. And all kinds of ideas on fund creators and things like this. I invited them to come to the meeting there, talk to us. There was four or five said, oh, we'll be there.
So anyway, I'm, I'm not looking for specific anything, just mainly want to share with you the idea that I have, at least talking to our, our local governments, financial aspect. See what kind of feedback we might get there. It's one of many pieces, I feel, in trying to resolve this problem.
We had talked about the facility out by the trash transfer station. We got A, we own the land, and B, we got a well out there we can tie into. And, you know, costs look like it'll be minimal out there compared to other places. But that's all we did, is talking about.
I think the building could itself with a wooden floor being around nine to 10, but I don't think wooden floor would be the way to go. I think you have to have a pad. And watch it disinfecting.
Anybody out here got any suggestions for us? There we go.
FMT wants to build us a.
I could talk to the sheriff after the meeting about a structure working with municipalities that happens in another county in partnership with a nonprofit.
We'd like to hear about that. Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Then the additional item I at least wanted to share with you is. Okay, I'll start out with long gone are the days of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar police cars. The average cost that has been running, getting more is anywhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand for new police cars. And you gentlemen, I'm sure are aware, the councils or number of years since adopted a policy of the sheriff's office replacing vehicles, three vehicles every year, three new vehicles every year. So throughout my term as sheriff, that's the rotation that I've tried to remain with. As it currently stands, we have three two thousand twenty-two Ford Explorer SUVs, which are police package on order through the Ford dealership having a state bid out of Lubin Town, Indiana. As you can see, price tag for each of those is a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. But that's loaded as far as police package out of factories concerned. And so my overall concept or idea, and I know my predecessor Sheriff Tony Burns did this a number of years ago. And this is a potential cost savings to taxpayers, and that is to approach the redevelopment board in regard to potentially getting TIP to help supplement the additional funding that's already set into place on the Q, by Q cap. As I have there, we're budgeted for eighty thousand per point two. And you can see the simple math there, that lights and equipment, as you may direct the venture alluded to. Prices are going up all the way around, including police lights and equipment. And so to outfit three new vehicles would cost us thirty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars. Big graphics, which is the obviously our information sheriff and such label on the side of our vehicles. At sixteen hundred dollars for that total of one hundred fifty-one thousand six twenty-two ninety-five. So you take the eighty thousand away, the difference that I've come up with is fifty-one thousand six hundred twenty-two ninety-five. So before approaching the redevelopment commission, which they have a meeting a week from today, I wanted to at least, since the Q cap is obviously something that you gentlemen direct, at least wanted to bring this to your attention before I approached the redevelopment. And I guess in essence, gain your blessing moving forward with this, because otherwise I'll have to be approaching the county council for an additional for this amount of the subsidy sums, so.
I believe they've helped in the past, haven't they?
Have they helped fire Trump, too?
I think so. I, I know they, as I said with Sheriff Burns, I know they, they assisted funding and buying sheriff's vehicles, so.
I don't know how they feel, feel about it, but I, I know that as long as these vehicles are being used to help control that area there, they can fund it, am I not right on that? And so it would be within their ability to, to do this. What do you think, Joe?
Well, it's worth a shot. You didn't have to ask Sheriff Burns how successful he was.
As I recall, he was very successful.
He was successful, he was good. He did what he asked for, or where he kept his things.
Well, even if they give you twice, twice a thousand, something's better than nothing.
Yeah, I know, if you don't ask for it, I don't get it.
Right.
I don't think it's a pass, I'm just trying to.
And I, I anticipate this, I guess, to give advance notice that for the twenty twenty-three, obviously, I'm gonna suggest that maybe we bump that eighty thousand to a hundred thousand for the twenty twenty-three on the Q cap for sheriff's vehicles.
I don't think that'll be enough.
Probably not.
Cause the prices right now are thirty-three, so next year they'll probably be thirty-five, so thirty-five, thirty-five.
I mean, that's part of the advantage going with the state bid, I mean, that those, those members make every effort trying to work with the local governments as far as pricing goes.
Just go get the federal government, learn that those poor people are being broke, they're working places.
Do, are these vehicles available?
Yeah, good point, Lauren, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, Dodge and Chevy are pretty much nonexistent as far as police vehicles are concerned. We were very fortunate, I actually ordered these back in March. We won't see these till roughly August. And so that's part of the reason why we're gonna have these start to ball rolling in advance here, or at least on the drive. Yes. I have one unmarked, yeah, it's on the April. No, they're all white, yeah.
Everybody's going all white.
Yeah, well, you're saying almost three or four thousand dollars for the vehicle, just a thing.
Right.
Then in the end, if you get rid of it, it's always good. And I hope some traffic is cool.
Lewis Rover's car out there.
Yeah, I say go to TIP, see what they can give you, then that's right, you might have to talk to the council. We don't need to vote on that, do we?
I think this is an idea, or you, you want us to vote on Ted's?
I think Jim gets.
I entertain a motion.
I did that, I'm.
Support the request, Rob.
Support the request of the sheriff to go to Ted for the fifty, roughly fifty-two thousand dollars needed in some other part of the board.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you gentlemen. One more bad news?
No, just checking.
You know, I, I want to go to the old auction thing first. Been noticing four-wheel drive school buses. That'd be real cool, I never had thought about it, four-wheel drive school buses, I always got them on the short buses, like I drove, you know. Okay. What is it?
The CTC Enterprise long caravan.
Yeah, what do we have to do on that?
Both prices are going up, you requested.
I saw that. Okay, so this is, you know, we're seeing increase inflation and making some of these school buses I like to have in consideration. Remaining the twenty-two county long here contract.
Basically, it raises fifteen dollars, but it's like one hundred and thirty-five, I did my math right?
Something like that, yeah. That ain't gonna be enough.
The long total?
Yeah.
Thirty-five more for the whole package.
Just per mowing?
Yeah, per mowing.
Do we have that extra in the budget for this year?
Did you say thirty-five or fifteen?
Right, I mean, I mean, so far it's been dry.
It depends on the weather, like, you know.
I think it'll be probably close. I think I'm glad we raised it up what we did.
I'm gonna take a motion to approve this. If not.
If not, we need everybody mowing.
Can you give me the total?
Don't run the man out of business.
When they approve it.
I know, just to put, have a thing in my truck, and two gallons, cans of gas cost me a hundred and five dollars.
That could change toward the end of the year too.
There ain't no prices for that, last year also.
Pardon me?
We didn't raise the prices this year at all, those prices were actually, last year also. And like everybody said.
So I have a motion and a second to approve this amendment.
Alright, now Devlo wants to, you can read the.
No, I just wonder, I.
Can we just give her one?
What, I just wonder what the, the cost increase of the contract is.
A hundred and thirty-five dollars a week, or a mowing, I'm sorry.
Per mowing. All of, was it fifteen property?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Nine, nine.
So there's no contract number, amount for?
Not for the end.
It's just per mow?
Yeah, because you can probably go two weeks with the dry spell, and you won't mow at all, cause if it gets on, it'll kill the dragon. Kill a little buckhorn. Yeah, please it over so it come back up when you do it.
Kill the buckhorn.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, so I would call for a vote, all in favor of the motion to amend the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We need to, one for him and one for Brett.
I'm sure I have one in here somewhere.
Get prices, keep them low, if I might have to go work for him, just so I can, they have to go to work? True. You've got a happy hour, right? Never heard that.
Okay, we have other commissioners' actions down here, we have resignation of the alcoholic beverage board appointment.
Yes, Cameron Yates had to resign. He did start, but when they gave him the certificate, it was the second page, with questions that, that he had to fill out. He was not, he did not live in the county for five continuous years, right before he was appointed, so then.
Five continuous years?
And he had left, he came back, he's been here all his life, but except for those couple of years.
Correct, he moved to Lafayette, I believe.
Yeah, so they made him resign, or asked him to resign, so we do need another replacement. I've had two people interested, so I thought maybe if we put it in paper that we're at looking for someone else, we might have.
When's their next meeting? About, by the next meeting?
No, he doesn't get it. They've been with one person for since they've.
How can they act with one person?
Well, they have the exercise person too, but I don't know, that's beyond me, I don't know.
Three persons, don't worry about it.
So, we do have a couple of people interested, I think.
Can you name those people, today or tomorrow?
I don't know. I mean, I didn't receive an email on the one that said she was going to, the other one has just, she was thinking about it. Council does have their representatives, so now we have to.
Long way off the bill, according?
Need to do the two thousand twenty-two Rita Bowell board appointments. And I used to be able to weigh through that and tell you what a PTO Bowell was. Property tax.
Board of Appeals.
We got O in there too.
I think it's supposed to be an A. Property tax assessment board of appeals.
Yeah, that's right, property.
Okay, and these happen to be certain, that creates a bit of apprehension and all that, so we're lucky to have these.
Huh?
So my suggestion would be.
Keep them.
Keep them.
I'm making a motion to the PTA board appointments, Thor, Cleveland, James Smith, and Jim Davis, did I say that right, Jim?
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to approve Doris, Cleveland, James Smith, and Jim Davis and Rita Bowell board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Any other business to come up before the board?
Good question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The notice for the request of proposals for the Bill operate transfer, I'm waiting for basically a, a review of notice and an RFP with the input from the Florida Thornburg and from Elabas. The timing on this is that if, if, we're not gonna be able to make it for the date, the paper, the newspaper, it's a, it's a published two times and then at least seven days before the opening of the RFP, so. It, assuming it goes in a fifteenth, the first publication would be fifteenth to the twenty-second. The earliest that the board can receive the proposals would be the twenty-ninth of June, and you don't have a meeting until July the fifth. So question is, do you want tentatively set a, a special meeting just to receive the proposals for the Bill operate transfer in advance of your July fifteenth? If you want to do that, you, you need to do that today while you're having an open meeting, remember you said that.
What day do you think we need to have it, Ted?
Well, it, it can be legally, it's the twenty-ninth, so you wouldn't have to do it, that's a Wednesday, you know, you got the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth.
Thursday and Thursday afternoon?
And then, but you could, and then you got, what? Then in July, you're, you're only gonna gain a little bit, but you could if you want to, if you wanted to get it started or. And you could potentially have the requests, the proposals, and then even have scheduled interviews for your July fifteenth, you know, in conjunction with, you might already have, have them in by having been able to meet a special meeting sometime before your July fifteenth, you might be able to schedule, I don't know, for a day.
Do we got that other board put together where we have to have the three people outside?
That, that's, that doesn't have to be done now.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you wanted to, or if you just wanna read it for July. I want to give that option.
I guess my question is, they're gonna submit documents to us, says select me.
Yeah.
Do we do interviews with them at that same time, or?
Uh, not on the day that you receive it, necessarily.
So we have to then set it for like the fifth?
Yeah, and having had some presentations, you're, you're already familiar with some of the players too, apparently. So I don't know how long that process will take, I mean, that's, that's entirely up to the board, it's not restricted by statute, how much you have to do, and so forth. I didn't know if you wanted to schedule a tentative special meeting, and then you could always cancel it if, if for some reason, something comes up or.
I think we should, just so we're not falling behind.
So the option would be the twenty-ninth or thirtieth, and maybe the first.
Twenty-nine, thirty, and the first.
I don't like that to do the first, that's right, I can do the Wednesday or Thursday.
Do you do the twenty-ninth?
Uh, that'd be the earliest that you could open it. See, this is to open, just like the paving bids, really open, you're not gonna make any decision.
Oh, no, they do here.
Uh, well, hey, assuming it goes in the paper on the fifteenth to the twenty-second, the earliest would be, well, no. That you can require them to be in. I'll ask that.
So that's to be.
That's correct, right, yeah.
That has to be the whole day.
Pardon, that has to be the whole day, that has, no, whole day, well, I mean, to get them to the twenty-ninth.
Well, Wednesdays they close the noon anyway, so.
The business stays the twenty-ninth, is it?
The thirtieth, so. So it's thirtieth, so one to one. So, so you wanna make it in the after, it doesn't have to be, it's any, it should be like.
Well, if they, if they wanna look at them like.
It should be, it should be like fif- fifteen, twenty minute, half hour meeting, you know, just to open them and, and then, you know, you will know which ones are in, or how many you've got before then, you just can't open them until that day. So you'll know how many potentially are interested, and then you may wanna be thinking about, well, let's, you can go ahead and schedule the interviews if you can, on, 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 not, not for that day, but you can say, let's do it, we got, we got three we wanna talk to, we'll do it on the fifth, you know, in conjunction with your other meeting, or after your meeting.
I think that would work, that way we got the ball rolling.
Okay, let's say, let's go from the thirtieth.
The earliest I can hear is the fourth.
Yeah, we'll do the fourth. Is that right, Lauren?
And then something comes up, you've said it, you've got, you, the auditor posted the notice, and if, so if it happens, maybe we'll all cancel it, like that. Thirty to four. So it'd be a special meeting for purposes only of opening proposals and anything related to the DOT process. Unless you, unless Beth has anything else that needs to be scheduled on it, which we, the special meeting, you have to notify, you have to give subject matter of what, what it is, so if something comes up that needs to be, then we need to add that to the, to the meeting notice. The meeting notice doesn't have to be actually posted until Tuesday the twenty-eighth. So you got between now and then, if you need to, to get that.
I do need to check on the time. I guess, I know something that day, and I don't know what time it is.
You've got another meeting on the twentieth, so if, if you find out there's something else you wanna put on that special meeting that's really urgent, you could always ask.
If she's saying she don't know if she can attend.
Well, I, I think I can, I just know that there's an appointment that day that I have to pick someone to, and I'm asking her what time it is, so.
And your first deputy?
Sure can.
So we don't have to put this, post it, we can wait until the next meeting actually, so, but, yeah, okay, that's all I have.
Anything else to come before, come before the board?
Motion, Mr. Chair? Got me, didn't you?
Yeah. I would like to throw out for a matter of discussion, gentlemen, I'm not asking for a vote on it today, but as a Christian, I believe in good and evil. And I think we've seen evil in the last short time down in Texas, and we've seen evil right here in Carroll County too. And, you know, fifty years ago right now, you talk about showing my age, fifty years ago this year, at this time of year, I had just finished my first year of teaching. Little country school in Carroll, down here, a wonderful place for kids, and Lauren went there to school. In my room, which was much larger than this, Scott went there to school, there were three pictures up on the wall, big pictures. There was Washington, Lincoln, and Jesus up on the wall. But we've lost a lot of our teaching of the history, teaching of the morals, teaching of the reasons that declared that this nation was created. The morality part, I think has been lost, and I'm not indicting our schools here, I'm saying everywhere. But wherever you take morality and you take, to me, Christianity out of schools, there's a void, there's a vacuum. And you're gonna have, wherever there's a vacuum, there's something else gonna move in, and evil moves in. And I think that's what we've seen, because back in the day, back fifty years ago, we didn't have school shooting, we didn't have all that stuff.
Probably at school, you had your gun in the back of your window, cause you don't hunt raptor schools. Yeah.
Yeah, I never had one in the back window of my truck, I didn't have a truck, but I had a car, but, but I had a lot of friends that did, and.
Used to teach gun safety in school.
That's right, they did. And I have a real problem with, and I've brought this up before about our sign, and I did. up before about our sign, and I didn't look for it today coming in, it says gun free facility. Because I saw on TV on that school in Texas, they have right across there too, this is a gun free facility. So they're just saying to everybody, nobody in here gonna shoot back. Come on in and shoot all you want to, because this is, there's nobody here. Um, I'd love to take that off our door down here. I don't know if that, is that a requirement? It has to be there?
I wanna check. I don't know what the court's managed that. Uh, I think that's the only, only potential issue.
Yeah.
No guns in the courthouse?
The courthouse safety thing, uh, so that's.
We, we have to meet with the state stands on that, so. But, uh, I, I think in, in our community and in expressing our, our commitment to a moral, good, peaceful community, we need to take a stand on this. And our county needs to take a stand on this. And I would like to see our national motto, in God we trust, on every vehicle with the county owns. I'd like to see it on every police car, I'd like to see it on every truck, every vehicle we have up there. I think that would set a tone for our county morality, a reminder. And I don't see how we could get in a whole lot of trouble when that's the national motto, that's on the one to five to ten to twenty dollar drill, uh, it's on our coin each. But I think we need, we need to be, the word proactive has been used too much, but we need, we need to be active on this, uh, saying, this community is, is in accordance with, with at least our former national policy of in God we trust. So I'd like to have you gentlemen think about that, and, uh, tell me what you think about, whether you're in favor of it next meeting, or whether not in favor of it, or if you'd like to put it on all of them, or you'd like to put it on them as we acquire new ones, or how do you wanna see it?
Do we have it on some of our cars now too?
No, but I will comment that Boone County Sheriff Mike Nielsen has it on all of his.
Boone County has it on theirs?
Yes.
I got to think about this, 'cause I heard there was some kind, some city, a small city in Kansas, that had voted to take it off. And it was a town of, I think, nine or ten thousand, I don't remember the name of it, but they got a petition, came into them with fifteen thousand names on it, proposed to this, darn near everybody in the county. It's like a petition, do not take that off of our cars.
Was that for the?
Pardon? It's the taxpayer table.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you.
How many cars you got, Tim? Seven, twelve?
Closer to that, fifty, fifty.
I think we have ninety or a hundred vehicles insured. Kentucky ticket, all the highway department ones, and every department that has a car and. I was particularly interested in Toad's thing here about, uh, you said it's about, uh,
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred dollars a car, or, yeah, three cars, five hundred bucks a car. That's all the decal and stuff on it, it would be just a line on each side or a line across the back, I don't know. That's another thing, is if we decide to do this, how do you wanna display it? Big?
Well, the people think this will be the, the cost of doing it all, that, that would be the question if they had it in their budgets to do it. It probably won't happen until next year. I'm in favor for it. I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm in favor for it, but, you know, if they need to put it in their budgets, they all need to get quotes to get.
Well, we probably oughta get a court.
Right, so each department who has vehicles need to go and say, hey, what's the go cost to put this on there, and put it in their budget for next year, and we can start it first the next year, so try to cover money or find it.
Do it all together, make sure that they're all the same and.
Yeah, I bet if we go to the same person or whoever.
So each department would have to do that.
Or we could rent them off and get Scotch feet out of it.
Spray pan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to bring in. Anything else to come before the board? Steve? Yes?
What are you gonna name the new building?
Pardon me?
What are you going to name the new building at four oh five Cottage Street? Cause I just called it the four oh five Cottage Street building.
You guys come up with a name yet?
What's the George Mears Government Building?
George Mears, uh, lost it after that.
Government Building?
Government Building.
How about?
I like that.
How about the Carroll County Annex Building?
I drive and I see Bridges name, it's left, doing this people on that, down the river. Where, where you saying, down the, I mean, down the road of years later, you got a name that nobody associates with. So, I mean, Bridges, roadways, there's some.
Somebody brought that to my attention, Carroll County Annex, or Government Annex Building.
I took the word building off of it.
Yeah, or Annex, yeah.
Keep it short, but it's Carroll County Annex.
I, I like the George Mears idea, but.
Well, I, I say, I see.
I have, going along with this, I have been contacted by a, uh, state legislator from Cote d'Mo area that is wanting to rename the bridge that is north of Burlington, one twenty nine, uh, after something. And he, he's getting all the information. And you know, like we have the, oh shit, just lost his name, there are different miles that are dedicated to people out here on, who's your heart?
What's the bridge called, that's George's place, that Iron Bridge?
And, or no, the Wilson Press Bridge. No, there's no idea.
Find the bridge anyway, for George. I like the County, Carroll County Annex.
I think it was, you know.
Big supporter, big supporter.
Yeah.
And that.
Of course, it's been in my history there.
Is that one actually named after somebody at Carroll?
Yeah, it's Carroll, really, there, there was a, uh, community there that was called Carroll. On the north side of the bridge.
And we can rename bridges, right?
Oh, yeah. We can rename, we can rename roads. We wanna, we wanna make a Biden Road, we could do that.
Don't have pop on them.
I instead texted back, four o'clock is okay, I mean, on two thirty.
Four o'clock, we're good. Okay, well, we've got a lot to think about too, and I've entertained a motion, Mr. Chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending.
Not yet. We gotta think about it.
It'd be nice.